Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I apologize for our slightly tardy start, but we had some technical glitches in getting our board members connected. We had a meeting of the entire board prior to this, so that's why we were a few minutes late. But moving on, in the agenda, under recognitions, I'm going to turn over to Sandy, talk about winter athletics.
Actually, I'm going to take that, Mr. President, if that's okay.
All right, go ahead.
All right. So, our boys and girls winter athletic teams had superb seasons, and apparently there were many surprises as well. Hoping that we're going to get to hear about some of those. With that, I'd like to introduce and invite up to this stage here Stephanie DeVos, our athletic director, to help us recognize these young athletes and learn more about their seasons. Stephanie?
Thank you for having us. They pretend to be shy, but they're really not. We had a stellar winter season, and as Mr. Mayor said, we had many surprises. I'm not going to stand up here and talk, but I want them to give themselves recognition and a chance to let you know how it went. Before I do get started, there were two young athletes that were recognized, and we will know later in May for the WIAA Scholar-Athlete Award, and that was John Yucatell, who I don't see here tonight, and Jordan Huber. And criteria included a high GPA and lettering in at least four sports, and we have a good shot at hopefully making at least a finalist in one of those two. So, congratulations to Jordan Huber and Johnny Yucatell. We're going to start out tonight with boys basketball. So, could I have boys basketball?
Hi, I'm Jake Niederhouser.
I'm Matthew Sparstead.
I'm Talimati.
And Cole Osterhues.
And our season was filled with a lot of adversity, but I felt we overcome, we overcame that pretty well. We have a young group of guys here. We only had two seniors, a handful of juniors, and a bunch of sophomores. So, I felt we did pretty well throughout the season. We had some good wins against Memorial, Menominee, and then our recent one was DC Everest, which we won in overtime. That was our first playoff game. We just lost a close game to Marshfield at home, a four or five-point game. So, we had a pretty successful season, and it was great to be on the team.
You missed the win over River Falls, right? Wasn't there a win there, too? Yeah? No?
One of the reasons why you don't have a newsletter is because boys basketball just finished their season Saturday night. We had kind of a surprise game Saturday night at home over spring break. So, a lot of these teams are just finishing up, and we apologize. As soon as we wrap up the seasons, we'll get you a newsletter. So, the next group we have is girls basketball.
Hi, I'm Jordan Huber.
Hi, Maggie Kaler.
Kate Johnson.
We had a very successful season. We finished 15-8, and we finished second in conference. Even though, you know, it's not about wins and losses, I think we're all really proud that this was the first season in 10 years that we finished with double-digit wins.
And like Kate said, we clearly made a lot of strides this year, and as the program has been building, we've been working a lot with the younger kids, too, so hopefully we can keep improving the program as well.
Great.
Thank you. I'd also like to recognize two of the coaches here tonight for girls basketball, head coach Joe Binky and Tess Rosardi, if you'd stand up and say hi. Many, many hours put in by these coaches that need to be recognized. Thank you. The next one is cheer and stunt.
Hi, I'm Jackie Carr.
I'm Fiona Green.
I'm Skylar Prue.
Overall, I think we had a really successful season in working together. We're not really a team anymore. We're more of a family. One of our most highlights, I think, would be winning Nationals against Memorial. It was amazing.
We also introduced the Rhinestone Raiders this year, which is our special needs cheer team, coached by Ms. Skigley, and they did perform at one competition and came first. They're always going to be competing against the other teams, but we always are super proud that they are trying to involve themselves.
We're all super honored to be working together as a family. Our coaches were especially awesome. We thank them a lot.
All right, great.
It was also around the district, you also see the special needs kids, and this group did a poster, so we're going to get those out and distribute those. It was really awesome to see how happy those kids were. Next, we have gymnastics.
Yeah, we're Hudson Gymnastics. I'm Mira Tevasi.
I'm Maddie Nelson.
I'm Maddie Wissey.
And we started off with our dual meets against other teams, and we won six of eight. And then we were able to take second at conference and beat River Falls, which is really cool.
Good, good. Somebody beat River Falls, that's good.
And then that gave us a lot of confidence going into sections, because we scored our highest at conference, and we took two gymnasts to state, and I think we improved a lot over the year, and we're ready for next year.
Yeah, we have no seniors, so hopefully next year we'll be a lot stronger.
Oh, state qualifiers were Maddie Nelson and Olivia Kaler, and Maddie Nelson here took 17th, and Olivia Kaler took 19th.
All right. Good, good job.
They love that. The next, we have the girls hockey, and I don't think we have a girls hockey rep here, but, okay. Oh, their banquet was tonight, you're right, thank you. Just a few blips for girls hockey. Girls hockey, right now, we're one of four teams in the state, entire state, that has a JV program. They're one of four teams in the state that is a standalone and not a co-op. Individual accomplishments included four players with conference honors, honorable mentions Sofia Concepcion, Katie Mariotti, and first team was Ali Takinen and Anna Wilgren. Two players also received state-level awards. All-state honorable mention went to Ali Takinen, and all-state second team went to Anna Wilgren. And this team looks to be an up-and-coming state contender, so if you want to watch an exciting game of girls hockey, come watch the girls play next year. The next group we have is boys hockey.
Hi, guys. My name is, my name is, my name is, my name is, can you just take over?
That's A.J. Ronoski, I'm Parker Shovlin.
And I'm Wyatt Dove. We had a overall really good season. We finished 20-7, beating some of the top teams in the state throughout the regular season, and heading into state, we were second, second ranked in the whole state, and then we got upset by Superior, who went on to win state, and yeah.
We also did a lot of community work with the youth. We, every Monday and Saturday, we skated with the youth kids, so that's fun.
Thanks for all the support you guys, too.
Thank you.
You guys do it all. Thank you.
The next group, thank you, guys. The next group we have is, are the raiders.
Hi, I'm Kate Murray.
I'm Alexa Wickenhauser.
We had a really successful season. We placed first in both our dances at conference, in our Jazz and Hip-Hop Dance, and also at regionals, placing first in both our dances. We then went on to state and placed second in our Hip-Hop Dance, which is the best we've placed in eight years, and that was a really proud moment for all of us. Thank you.
Thanks, girls. The next group we have is their representatives from Boy Swim and Dive. Wrestlers, maybe?
There we go.
I'm Dylan Anderson.
I'm Sawyer Massey.
I'm Max Gurkey.
And Jerry Bronson.
As most of you know, we've had a tremendous wrestling season. We were successful both as individuals and a team. As a senior and a captain, I wouldn't trade this experience for the world. We worked very hard to reach what we achieved. It was very worth it. The whole wrestling team and fans would like to thank the athletic department for all the work that you let us do.
There are many of us who return for next season. We consider the accomplishments of this year just to be the building blocks and stepping stones. We plan to continue to work very hard and climb to be an even greater team next year.
We started off the year with a loss to Eclair North, but after that, we went on and beat every other team in the conference, including River Falls. Fifty-eight to nine, or something like that. And then we won the, one of the biggest pre-state tournaments in the state in Fond du Lac, and then we had, out of the 14 weight brackets, we had seven of us as regional champions. Those seven of us also qualified out of sectionals and went to state, and three of us placed, I took third, Max took fourth, and Matt Kosky took fifth.
Yeah, we had a great year. We accomplished a lot, and, yeah.
All right.
Thanks, guys. That was one of the many surprises. We were very well-balanced throughout the team this year, which helped out quite a bit. We're always trying different things. If there's one thing I like, it's change. And one of the things that we added this year, kind of at the spur of a moment, right before tournament, I had a sports psychologist come in, and just kind of a trial and error thing. Premier sports psychologist, a young man by the name of Simon, came in and talked to us. Over, there were over 140 kids in attendance, and many coaches and parents that also wanted to be involved. The message focused on concentration, positive self-talk, circle of control and imagery. The importance of factors such as competition in everyday life was also discussed. We look to the future to schedule additional sessions and to enhance and build upon what was learned at this first session, which many, many positive comments, and I think, did you guys get anything out of it?
Yeah.
I mean, nothing but positive response from the athletes. So, stellar winter season. We look forward to spring. It's already began, and with track sign up yesterday, we had close to 200 kids just for track. So, here we go, and we welcome the sun and warmth. Thank you for having us.
All right. Any comments from board members? Questions?
Mr. President, I just want to thank the students for your participation out in the community. I really think that's an important piece, and getting the community's support behind what you do is really important. So, I've seen you guys out there. I've seen the work that you're doing. Keep that part up, please. Thanks.
Yeah, I'd want to echo that. I heard one of the sports mention, you know, the service that they do out in the community, and I don't know if the basketball guys, I teased them about River Falls, but I saw you guys out there at the YMCA playing buckets with the kids with the special needs, and that is great. I really appreciate going the extra effort in that regard. You represent us well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for coming. I know we had banquets for at least one of the sports, and so we probably would have had even more coming. But, yes, and I think before you're out the door, make sure that you give extra thanks to your coaches, too, all the time and effort that they put in. We really appreciate that. All right, now, next item on the agenda is superintendent's report, and I guess national merit finalists. More recognitions.
Absolutely. We have a lot of Hudson-talented students, and here are two others that we recognized at an earlier board meeting for the 2014 National Merit Scholarship Competition. And these two young women, Hannah Luters and Elaine Smith, are moving forward in that competition. They were semifinalists, and that's what we announced earlier, and they've now moved on to the finalists round and are in competition for the 8,000 students across the country that are merit scholarship winners. So, we wish them the best in that next round, and congratulations to them and their accomplishments that are recognized. Moving on to our school board primary election in February, and we thank all of our community members who voted and expressed their interest in the various candidates. We had nine candidates for the three seats on the school board, and you can see the results behind me for the February election. The six candidates with the top votes are moving forward, and at the bottom of that page, you can see the order that will be on the April 7 ballot. So, we have congratulations to, and I'm going to say it in the order on the ballot, Sue Katas, is Sue here? Rob Brown, and Rob, would you stand up, please? Butch Schultz. Sandy Gurkey, you can stand up, too. Lowell Enerson. And Joe Westerbath. So, congratulations to those six candidates. We also thank Kristy Vitale, Nicole Lotto, and Pam Brokaw for their interest in being on the school board and having their name on the ballot for the February primary. So, the next election, the general election, is on April 7. We encourage everyone in our community to come out and vote for three candidates of their choice, and we look forward to those results following that election. They will be posted on our website. Moving on to the next item, it's a recognition of Hudson Prairie, and certainly we want to congratulate Hudson Prairie Elementary with leadership principal Suzie Prather, and then the rest of their staff for being recognized by the Wisconsin Center for Educational Research, and this is out of UW-Madison. And we received a surprise letter about this work, and the Wisconsin Center has identified a small group of schools across the state who have shown significant growth in either math or reading on the WKCE for a three-year period, and they're looking at those schools to see what are they doing so that that, those techniques and strategies they're using can be replicated in other places. So, Hudson Prairie has been recognized in the area of math, and they will, the center is asking for information from Hudson Prairie about what their practices are, and have the opportunity to share those with other school districts in the state of Wisconsin. So, congratulations to their work, and certainly to those students who are being identified as well through this important work in our state. And moving on, unless there are any questions. So, I also wanted to just announce that Strive is celebrating a 20th anniversary. This is a wonderful milestone for this program. Strive stands for success through teamwork, respect, initiative, vision, and effort. And it started in 1994, and this is a program that has been successful for many, many years for Hudson's alternative learners, and it's a school within a school concept, and certainly we want to recognize the teachers in that program, but specifically the director of the program, Cindy Mitchell. And so, we hope that people in our community will come out and join us at the open house on Thursday, March 26, anytime between 2:00 and 5:00 p.m. at the high school, room 439, but if you forget the room, we'll help you out when you get there. So, please come. Please come and recognize that program.
Well-deserved recognition, too. It's hard to believe that's 20 years in the making, but they've really grown that program, and they do great work.
Absolutely. And I know a couple of our board members are mentors in that program, both Bruce and Jamie. I think they're the only ones that are at this point, but they spend a lot of time with students, and it's a wonderful effort. Many community members are involved. All right, the next one, we had a community member come forward, Pat Saban, at a previous school board meeting, and had some questions about Diversity Day at the high school. And so, I just wanted to talk about Diversity Day and what the purpose of that is. It's organized by our Diversity Club. The motto of the Diversity Club is "See, Accept, Expand," and the advisor is social studies teacher Dave Hammond. And the club organizes all of the events of Diversity Day. It's an all-day talent show that allows students to express their culture onstage in front of the student body, and it's a wonderful opportunity for them to do that in country music, hip-hop dance, poetry, reading, slideshows. Our exchange students often share information about their country, and a great opportunity for both the staff and students at the school. Staff also participate in this talent show, so you can imagine that's well-received as well. And Pat had expressed some concern about a webpage for the Diversity Club, and that webpage was out of date and has been updated at this point. So, I did call Pat and talk to her about Diversity Days and share this information with her as well, but it's a great opportunity for our students. And talking with Dave Hammond, he certainly recognized the students and all the work that they do to organize this day. They are in charge of the day, and it's a wonderful opportunity for them to learn and to lead. And that would be my report. So, unless there are some questions or comments?
Any questions for Mary on the superintendent's report? All right. Well, we have a fairly brief agenda tonight. We mixed up the order just a little bit because we have at least one director that needs to be at another meeting, and that director could be a resource in discussing one of our topics for action, so I'll go right to it, and that is the potential for a Board of Education resolution and communication regarding the governor's biennial budget proposal. And next to that is Lynn, so Lynn and Mary is, and I know that there was some discussion at the finance committee last night, so I'll let you take it over.
Thanks, Jamie. Extensive, actually, probably a good chunk of our meeting last night, but in front of you and your board materials, board members, and in under topics for action is a resolution that has been rewritten from what we saw at finance last night. Basically, we took a resolution that, we tried to represent how the budget impact would affect Hudson, and Hudson specifically. We tried to remove political implications or any leanings, and just deal with the facts as far as if the budget goes through as it is, how it would impact Hudson. So, what you see in front of you is a resolution that the administration sent out today that represented that body of work that we tried to put together last night. So, Tim, you probably have more details that you want to cover, or Mary? Well, just to add on to what Lynn said, yes, it was a very robust discussion at finance, and this is very updated from the version that we first had, based on the feedback from board members. The WASB, Wisconsin Association of School Boards, has been recommending that school boards communicate with their elected representatives about the budget, and particularly the governor's proposal on that budget, and the impact on our school district. So, that's what this is to look at and consider by the board. The proposed budget at this point, the state budget, certainly has a decrease in aid to the Hudson School District, and we have seen numerous districts throughout the state adopt resolutions, and I wouldn't say exactly similar to ours at all. This is very unique and very Hudsonized. So, the finance committee considered it, made changes to this, and I think it's important for Tim to talk about, you have talked about the district budget and some of the impact, but just to review that before the board considers this resolution.
Sure. Some, and some of the finer points of that impact are built into the resolution. So, and I'll just go through a few of those. The, there is, under the proposal, a $150 per student categorical aid that would be eliminated in 2015, 2016. So, what that means to Hudson is a loss of about $840 to $850,000, depending on the number of the student count. What is even more significant is we have a situation in the state aid formula where property-rich districts, districts that are viewed as property, that have wealth in their property valuations, lose state aid, and that state aid gets redistributed to other districts. Our situation is, we had property valuations go up about 7.25% this past year, and that's a, it's a great thing if you own property. It's not a good thing if you're the Hudson School District, because what happens is then roughly, the state average is about 2.6%, so we're almost triple the state average. And so, what happens is there's that redistribution of state aid, and we had a slight dip in students, so that exacerbates that problem. And so, we're estimating rough numbers-wise, because there's a lot of work yet to be done at the state level, and we don't have numbers from the state yet, but we're estimating an additional aid loss of about $2.6 million. So, taking those two together, about $3.4, $3.5 million in aid loss right off the start. If you look at in terms of the profile of the district and its spending and tax levy, we're one of the lowest-spending districts in the state. In our 12, the 12-13 data that DPI puts out, and that's the latest data that's available right now, we spent 9,000, about $9,900 per student. The state average is $12,075. So, what that means is if we spent the state average, which we don't, that would mean an additional $12 million to the district. Related to that is what we call the under levy, and that amount is an amount that represents what the board did not levy but could have levied. So, there are revenue caps in place for all districts in the state, and what that means is there is only a certain amount of money they can raise through state aid and a certain amount of money that they can levy. The district is under-leved for several years, over about, over a decade. If we put into perspective that under levy, that was $12.8 million this past year, so $12.8 million was not levied to our local taxpayer. If we try to equate or estimate what that means to a property, and this is rough numbers, we're looking at a savings of about $700 for a year on a $200,000 home. So, it's pretty significant. It's very significant. We're unique. Most districts don't have an under levy, and if they have one, it's not nearly as large as what Hudson has. You know, looking at the impact then with this budget proposal, over the years, we have built in efficiencies, we have cut costs, and that's how we get to one of the lowest-spending districts in the state, is by doing that. That means we don't have as much room to cut. We don't have as much room to, and we've got to make up potentially a $3.4, $3.5 million gap. If we did, even with cuts at this point, even with cuts, we'd be looking at a double-digit increase to the tax levy. Again, perspectives, if you look long-term, what our tax levy's done, over the last five years, we've gone up an average of 1.73% in the tax levy. Again, you know, costs continue to rise. We certainly have to meet those costs. We have to provide a good education to students. All of those things come into play. And I think, actually, if we look at it under levy cumulatively, it's over $83 million in that last roughly decade that we've under-leved. So, that is direct tax relief. That is about as direct a tax relief to taxpayers as you can get.
Okay, so we have the explanation for the various numbers, this resolution. Most resolutions that have been adopted by other districts and by virtue of calling a resolution usually has whereas clauses, and I guess we've just eliminated the whereas clauses and just stated by bullet points the factual nature of the discussion. And the only part that is actually advocating anything is the last paragraph. I don't know if we have that page up there? Okay, good. And... And, I don't know, Lynn, do you want to read it?
Sure, I can read it. It says, "The Hudson School District Board of Education advocates for an adequately-funded education for Hudson and Wisconsin public school students. We strongly encourage the Governor and the state legislature to restore the $150 per pupil categorical aid in 2015-17, add an inflationary increase in state equalization aid and a corresponding increase in the revenue cap, and not increase public funding for the expansion of vouchers and independent charter schools so that the Wisconsin public school districts receive necessary funding to continue Wisconsin's tradition of investment in high-quality public education for our youth."
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Mary, when you were speaking about this, when you introduced it, you made a statement that it was changed in the Finance Committee based on feedback from board members? That's what you said? When was feedback from board members obtained, because I wasn't contacted?
I was referring to the feedback at the Finance Committee of the three members who were at that meeting. I'm sorry, that was unquote.
I apologize, it made it sound like it was like all the board members had had an input into it. Okay. Also, I would like to say that there are things in here that I think I could approve of, but there are some things in here that I'm not in favor of having in a resolution. So I will probably have to vote no on this, if you're going to send it through the way it is. One of the things that I'm concerned about or that I have observed is last year, we received 800 and some thousand additional money after the original budget was set. And that was about $150 per student last year. The budget was set, and then we came up, they gave us a windfall. We were all happy about it. It's my understanding that that could happen probably again this year. And in fact, Governor Walker has an article in the Watertown paper that says that he is looking perfectly willing and open to allocating more money to UW and schools and roads and education. I think this might be premature for me to approve of this. It's in the early stages of the budget process at this point. Whatever budget we end up with from the state now could probably, will more than likely be changed. The final budget will be hammered out by the Finance Committee. And there is a high probability that the final product will not look like what is currently on the table. I just think it's premature for us to contemplate a resolution opposing this budget and the way it is currently written. I believe we need to respectfully allow the state budgeting process to move forward unhindered by, this is a non-binding resolution, correct? Is that what it would be called?
Well, there's, yeah, there's no resolution that any school board can pass that dictates to the Governor or the legislature what to do.
Right. So it would seem like we should just respectfully let the process work its way out. I would anticipate that the budget that's currently being discussed by the Finance Committee is very different from what we're going to end up with. And we will more than likely have the same thing we had last year with a big increase.
Mr. President?
Yes, Lynn.
I understand what you're saying, Sandy. And I too think that the budget will change as it goes through the process. But, you know, I personally feel that we're elected to this position to advocate for Hudson and Hudson students. And this is the time to let the legislature know how we feel it's going to impact us and our district. And, you know, some of the resolutions that I saw from other districts were very political and very, you know, that was something we really worked hard to try to take out of this and just try to say, you know, we don't want to cut our schools' funding by, you know, $2.6 million in the equalization aid and then another $840,000 in the categorical aids. And that's something that, if they know how it impacts districts and district funding in the schools, I think it's important for them to hear in the budgeting process, then be reactive to it. So that was my opinion on this.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd also concur with Lynn in terms of that, this is the time that we have to speak. I don't think it's premature at all. Our own representatives have held open sessions of listening sessions. They're wanting to hear about the responses. They want responses about this budget. I think it's appropriate for us, as the elected representatives of this school district, to express our opinion. You can certainly vote no to it, of course, but I don't think it's premature. I think it would be, I think it would be misjustice for us not to say something and respond to it. And I do believe that the budget may change, very well may change. But I think we need to weigh in. I think we need to speak up.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mary.
You know, we're very fortunate in this area to have our representatives, Senator Sheila Harzendorf and Representative Dean Knutson, on the Joint Finance Committee. And as Sandy talked about, they have a very key role in helping move the budget forward. So absolutely. The Finance Committee has announced a series of hearings. So they're looking for feedback from the community during the month of March. And the hearings, I believe, are all in the month of March, and asking for that feedback.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sandy.
I could accept the things that are in here. I understand the budget problems it's going to create for us. I understand we have to come up with this money somewhere. There are a couple of things. One of the major things is the language that you have included in here that talks about expansion, eliminating, not increasing funding for the expansion of vouchers and independent charter schools. I am of the belief that within the state of Wisconsin, there are school districts where the public schools don't perform well and that the parents should have the right to put their children in schools that are better performing. So if you could remove that section or change that language in here, I could vote for this. That's one of my biggest objections, is the language in here that encourages them not to increase any funding for the expansion of vouchers and independent charter schools.
So, Mr. President?
Bruce, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, we talked about that last night a little bit, too, because one of the things that we were cognizant of is, you know, how that might be representing our board and where we may, you know, sit on that. However, I think one of the key words, we didn't want to eliminate it, to say eliminate any funding, is just saying additional funding. It was maybe the way that it's worded here. Because there were a lot of other items in here, Sandy, that last night we had, it was probably over an hour, it was a long discussion, around a number of areas that raised concern. So I think it was a good debate in terms of getting to something that was, we were comfortable with. And I think as a group, we need to try and come up with something that we are, again, comfortable with collectively. Because most of what we want to get across are the bullet points and really how things are going to impact us here, right? Are there any charter schools around us in the state today? No, they're not. You know, is that something that could potentially come our way here in this area? Absolutely. You know, I'm sure that there are those that are exploring that alternative. But, you know, for me, I think the bullet points are probably the biggest areas of focus that I just want to make sure that some communication gets out there, that at least we're trying to make it a little bit more real for how it's going to impact us here locally. Because we've under-levied so many years, I mean, we're actually in a position where we could do some things. But it's probably not the right things for us to do. I think hopefully that there's going to be some more hashing out of this budget before we get to the end of it. But there are other districts that are levied to the max. I mean, they're going to have to cut, you know? And I'm sure that those boards right now are really in some tough, you know, decision-making situations that they're going to have coming up. So I'd like to get something out. I think the more that we can keep it very specific to what we're dealing with here in our community and how it's going to impact our students and our taxpayers in this community, I think it's good for us to just submit something.
Mr. President?
Sandy?
I understand this is designed for our community. It's addressing the problems that we would have. But we don't have a lot of charter schools. And do we lose very many students for vouchers, Mary, in our district?
At this point, the Hudson area, vouchers have not been expanded to the Hudson area. The proposal in the budget would expand it to our area as well. So as we understand it, I'd rather probably turn it over to Tim to talk about how it plays out, because there's quite a bit of change in the proposal that's different from how that has functioned in the past. And it has been mostly in the urban centers, as you've talked about.
Right.
Yeah. The voucher program was introduced in the last biennium, and it had some caps on it as far as the number of students that could participate and the regions that students could participate in. This really opens it up statewide and removes the caps. So, and that's where it gets really difficult for a school district like Hudson to measure what the impact is. But if you're a family that is within a certain percentage of income within the federal poverty rate, you would get a voucher. And those dollars would come from the Hudson School District to a private school within the district. And so that's a direct transfer of funding from Hudson to the private school. There's a lot of unanswered questions as to all of the details and exactly how that would work. And again, it's hard to apply and say, we're going to lose X amount of dollars. But that's the way it's proposed right now.
Tim, what you're describing, is it similar to how we lose money through open enrollment?
It would be similar.
How is it different?
The difference, and I'll speak in very generally, because there are a lot of details to this and, you know, we haven't fully vetted this out. It's similar, and yet there is a difference. And one of the differences is for secondary students, the amount of open enrollment aid that we would bring into the district for an open enrollment student, what is through the voucher program, we'd actually pay out more than that to a private school. So it's not just charter schools, but it's private schools. And so those vouchers would be available to anybody meeting the guidelines, the criteria set out.
So you mean if the private schools like St. Pat's and Trinity would be eligible for these students coming to them, then parents moving them to those schools?
Yes. If they meet the criteria, they would become eligible.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments? Then, I guess, right now, this is something, I understand that it was just crafted and finalized, if you will, in the last 24 hours, and a major revision from what was discussed last night at Finance. I guess where I come down, similar to what Tom said, this is the time for public comment. We've been invited by Representative Knutson and Senator Harzendorf to have input and feedback on various aspects of the budget. And I am hopeful that those comments and that feedback would then impact the budget so that it is not enacted as proposed. I think what I like about it, I agree with Bruce, that I like the facts as they're laid out and the bullet points, and we keep it factual. And unlike many of the other districts who are passing much more politically-charged resolutions than this one is, is that they are levied to the max. And they have not exercised the fiscal constraint that this district has over the last decade. And you mentioned how far a cumulative $83 million under-levy, which is a big savings to us taxpayers in the district. And I think that this resolution as written is exactly what we should be doing, you know, as a public school board, being advocates for the public school system as well as not just our students, but taxpayers and families of the district. And our situation is exacerbated, as Tim pointed out, the loss of state equalization aid. That's the difference between the $150 categorical aid loss per student. But the equalization aid that we're going to be losing, because we got a one-year respite, basically, on our property taxes for this increase in property valuation of 7.4 or 7.5 percent.
Yeah. Seven and a quarter.
Seven and a quarter, okay, of 7.25. Well, that's almost three times the state average. And so essentially, we're losing state aid because of that in the next time. And so that is 2.6 is approximate, because we don't have the final numbers.
Right.
But that's why, all the more important, somebody says, well, it's $850,000. Well, when you start talking about impact on our taxes, and we're going to have a hard enough time coming up with that $2.5 million to throw another $850,000. And then who knows how much we might lose through the private voucher system as currently proposed, understanding it may end up being something else. I think we do have an obligation to have some kind of feedback to the state to indicate what we would advocate for. And unlike a lot of the other districts, this is coming from a district that has exercised fiscal restraint in trying to keep our expenses down. And we shouldn't be penalized even more just because we happen to live in a growing part of the state.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I want to thank you and Bruce for explaining this to me in Lynn's presentation. I have a clearer understanding of what this all means. I still have some reservations about this language about the charter schools and also the timing of this, because I think it might be premature. But I will vote for this, understanding that we need to send a message to Madison that says, don't take all this money from us. I understand that. So with the reservations that I have, I will be more than happy to support this. Thank you for the explanation, I appreciate it.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mary.
Just responding to Sandy. If we get any additional information on the voucher independent charter schools, we'll communicate that to the board as well. As Tim talked about, not all the details are out yet. And so if anything else comes out, we'll make sure we convey that.
Yeah, and for what's worth saying, I want to say that I kind of agree with you when I first read a lot of the other resolutions coming from other districts when it came to that voucher part of it, because, you know, I know that in some areas, it may be needed. You know, it may be needed and may work. But I think it was the key words that Bruce pointed out and they talked about at Finance last night was the additional expansion. And having that come from public funding is kind of a key point. But again, we're hopeful that it will change over the next couple of months. And perhaps it won't be coming directly out of our Hudson District school funds.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, can I make one comment?
Sure.
Not to just continue to pile on, but, and I'm glad we're all in agreement. But I think especially given the fact that we've under-levied and we've been cost-effective, to potentially be looking at a double-digit increase in the levy, it would be a dereliction of duty to not, to remain mute and not try to send a message. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the Board of Education Resolution and Communication regarding the Governor's biennial budget proposal.
Second. Motion by Lynn, second by Tom. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted.
Just adding on to that, on Friday, the CISA 11 superintendents and I will be meeting with legislators from our area. And I will be able to communicate this with them, as well as our local representatives and the Governor's office and the houses, the Senate and the House. So thank you very much.
All right.
May I just make a comment?
Yes, sure.
The public meeting on this for our area is going to be held in Rice Lake. I found that out today. I'm not sure what the date is. Maybe Mary can let us find that out and let us know. But it will be held in Rice Lake. If anybody wants to go and say your piece, you can do that.
Excellent. Thank you for adding that.
Unfortunately, it is one of the three days for finalist interviews for the superintendent search, so.
Well, then you all know where I'll be.
It is during the day, but I just want, I will send out the date. But when I looked at it, I went, oh darn, it's, you know, it's at that time.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us on the agenda to consent items. And I would entertain a motion to adopt.
Mr. President, I move approval of the consent items and that the Director of Financial Services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $2,637,195.20.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent items are adopted. And we have two requests to speak. And excuse me while I try to scroll down on my computer here. We have two requests to speak, and, sorry, was there an order? Doesn't matter. All right. I'll just ask Colin Thorpe. Is he here? Okay. And you have an issue with regard to something that happened in volleyball practice back in August. And. practice back in August. And, um, while we want to honor everyone's, uh, you know, request to speak, we always, um, caution folks that we do not, uh, single out individuals or talk about, um, individual circumstances, whether that be a student or staff member. And we also would prefer if things had, you know, go to, through the administration first, but, um, you have your time to speak here to the board.
And I understand, I appreciate that and I try and I'll explain this. Um, this is a formal complaint that I want recorded in the notes. During volleyball practice the last week of August two thousand and fourteen, my daughter, along with the varsity and JV volleyball team witnessed the varsity coach move a girl by her ponytail to the spot he wanted her to stand on the volleyball court. She was so upset slash hurt, she cried. It was seen by the JV and varsity girls, yet nothing was said to the girls who witnessed it. This behavior is unacceptable, abusive power, undue influence. It's intimidating to the girls who saw it happen because the coach holds all the power. If a teacher did this to your child, if a boss did this to you, it would and should be of great concern. We followed the proper channels, uh, emailed the athletic director on nine twenty-two. I went to the superintendent's office on nine twenty-six, uh, talked to the superintendent's assistant. I explained the situation and asked that at very least, that all the girls should be talked to and told that this is not acceptable behavior. I was told, uh, I would be called. Neither of these things have happened. Uh, my concern was nothing was said to the rest of the girls. The message to these young women is that this is acceptable behavior by the school, that men can yank you by your hair for standing in the wrong place. I'm appalled at this day and age of zero tolerance that this would not be addressed to the entire team.
Good, thank you for your comment. And then next up, we have Patty Schachner. And you have comments to make about suicide and drug prevention in St. Craig County.
Yes, um, I have some handouts for you guys. If I can just. I am the chief medical examiner here in St. Craig County. I'm the chief medical examiner here in St. Craig County. Um, I am one of the co-founders of the Suicide Prevention Task Force and then also sit on the Drug Prevention Task Force here in St. Craig County. Um, in St. Craig County, our suicide level, our suicide rate is over the national average and our drug overdose rate is twice the national average. So we know we have a problem here. As a medical examiner, I see it. It, it's my job. I deal with the final chapter. So we're really working hard to figure out some ways to do prevention that is countywide. And what we've come up with is a resource guide is going to be what we want to do. We're going to every school district. We want every school district to kind of give the thumbs up that yes, we will participate. Um, we're going to have fifty thousand of them printed. We're partnering with River Towns to help us. We have a spokesperson with Missy Germain, uh, back here who is going to help us with a PSA so we can also get our message out on, uh, community, uh, TV and hopefully in the movie theaters. Um, we're asking that the school districts participate with us and support us. We just want a couple of things from you. We don't want money. We know money's tight. And so just telling you right now, but, but, um, what we're going to do is we're having a fundraiser in May. We would like you as a district to commit your AODA person to our committee. We would like you to commit one community leader, um, and then one artist. Our, um, fundraiser is going to be held at The Orchard. Every community is going to be responsible for selling their own tickets. And the, the person that they pick, that's going to be the artist, is going to be on stage and paint a picture with all the other school district representatives. And then we're going to auction off the paintings. And our, um, kind of goal here is St. Craig County, we're all in it together and we all look at St. Craig County from a different view. We all have the same goals, but we see different things. And it's important that we really invest in prevention. If I never have to, to investigate another suicide or drug overdose, I'd be a happy person. But in order for that to happen, we need investment from the school districts. Um, you know, so basically, I just want to know, are you in or not?
Great. Well, Tony, this is, I'm sure, something that would be in your area. I don't know if you had been made aware of this or they, this was brought to you before, but, um, I think that you've been involved in similar things, so.
Yes, thanks, Mr. President. Um, I, I was made aware of this last week and, and I think it's, um, a terrific initiative and I'm very proud of the work that the coalition is doing. Um, we do have a representative that participates on the coalition and many of the things that you are talking about align very nicely with, uh, the work that we're doing here in the school district as well. So, um, a number of those things that you're talking about, um, I, I would think that we would be able to do.
Okay, um, if you could, you got my card.
Yeah.
Email me and we'll get this show started. Um, we have four more, uh, school districts to go to on Monday. Um, you can see on the list here, everybody who's going to be involved. We're going to have, uh, all the district administrators put a message together that's going to be part of this, uh, um, resource guide. And our goal is to have all the AODA people together and then create a way to distribute it to all the kids from sixth grade on up on the first day of school.
Well, thank you. And, and we are very happy to participate in it. And, and it really does take an entire community coming together to, uh, to work on these issues. So I'm glad, I'm glad we'll be able to be part of it as long as you promise that I don't have to be the artist.
Then you need to pick someone else.
And before you leave, just why don't you repeat the date and time again of the event?
The event is May seventeenth from five to eight at The Orchard in Baldwin because it's the center of the community, of the county. So, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, now, any, uh, board or administration response to comments from citizens?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would like to certainly respond to Mr. Thorpe. And, um, you know, we agree with you certainly that all of our students should be treated with dignity and respect at all times. I apologize for, um, you not receiving a call back. Um, I thought that it happened and that it was resolved, but we will call you tomorrow and set up a meeting to sit down and talk to you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Bruce?
Yeah, just to Patty, I, there's been a lot of work in the community, I know, over the last couple of years, at least in Hudson here, for, um, you know, heroin and trying to make more, uh, out in the open. I, I, have you worked with, uh, I don't know, maybe I, I don't know if it's worth asking a question. I don't want to make her come all the way back up. There, there's a lot of great people that care about it here, I think. And there are, um, some other community groups that I know continue to stay engaged in on this. And there are plenty of wonderful artists in the community as well, I'm sure, that would like to get engaged. So, appreciate you bringing it forward. It's good. Interesting. Thanks for sharing that. Appreciate it.
And, and just restating it for those people that may be watching, uh, at home, uh, the comment that was made was of the overdoses, thirty out of the thirty-two were from legal prescription medications. All right, thank you. All right, any other comments then? Um, all right, moving on to reports. Um, and I guess my name is associated with the first one, but I would, at this time, I would ask Tom Van Pelt, who's here, and Tracy Habib Shaleen, members of the Community Engagement Process Steward Team. We also have two other members up here besides myself. We have Bruce Hanson and Dave Grambo. And so, since we were busy with our meeting and, um, uh, and I was working my day job, I trust that you guys got this handled. Since my, my name's on it, I'm going to turn it over to Tracy and, uh, Tom.
Good evening. Thank you, Bruce. Um, I'm here tonight on behalf of the, uh, community members of the, uh, Process Engagement Team to provide a stage one update in regards to where the team is at and where the, uh, engagement process is at, at this point in time. Uh, we're approximately a month into this process and as you might recall, it's a four-stage process. And so we're firmly in stage one right now. And just, we're within about ten days of wrapping up stage one. And so it seems like it's timely, uh, to provide the update where we're at and a little bit of a sense for where we're headed. So, as you can see in the, uh, slide here, uh, the work of the team is, in this first stage, has been devoted to the development of toolkits, what are, what we're calling toolkits that have been disseminated out into various locations in the community, including the Hudson Library, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, various municipality offices scattered around the district, uh, the Riverfront Athletic Center and some other locations that are noted there. The purpose of the, uh, toolkit is to allow community groups, community members to, uh, check out a, a toolkit, review, uh, the information that's included in the toolkit, which, uh, talks about educational expectations, both from the state and the local level, uh, certain demographic information and, uh, and current enrollment figures as well. Uh, the same information is also available online, uh, through the, uh, district's website. Uh, it's the very same data set that's involved in the, uh, physical toolkits that are available in the community. Um, and we're using that process. The surveys are providing information that we'll talk about in just a, a second in regards to some of the feedback that's come in so far from people that have reviewed the, uh, the information in this stage one process. Um, and group responses are being entered, uh, as they come in, um, by district, uh, staff. Currently, in addition to, uh, the toolkits, uh, we've been relying on some, uh, individual initiatives, uh, by various community, uh, or various team members, uh, to host, uh, different, uh, groups or try to attempt to intercept the public, if you will. Uh, one of those attempts was at a St. Pat's, uh, fa, uh, fish fry a couple of weeks ago, uh, where there were a couple of, uh, team members there and, and tried to intercept people as they were either going in or coming out, uh, from the fish fry to try to engage them and encourage them to, uh, to check out the online survey information. Uh, we've also had a number of, uh, community, small community groups that have taken place, uh, some very small, uh, some with, uh, pretty good attendance. And there's also two more opportunities, uh, for the community to do that in, in more of a group setting if they, for whatever reason, they don't want to try the, uh, online survey, uh, opportunity. Uh, there's one, uh, March twelfth, um, at the, uh, School District Office, uh, from seven to eight-thirty. And then next Monday, uh, in the Community Room at Citizen State Bank, uh, from seven to eight-thirty, there, there's also a group opportunity for public, uh, for the public to attend and participate in more of a group setting, um, yeah, at Citizen State Bank. And then there's also been sometimes spent by the team trying to determine how best to reach out to some underserved, uh, groups in the community. Um, as we, uh, have information or has survey revol, results are logged in, there is some demographic information that will tell us what groups in particular are responding to the survey. And, um, we've tried to then take that information and target groups that maybe have, are underrepresented so far, uh, in their responses. If you go to the next slide, as of March first, we've had twelve hundred and fifty-six people view the information either physically, uh, through the toolkits or online. A hundred and ninety-six people have responded to the five questions that are contained, um, in the toolkit and are the, uh, questions that we're seeking to use to engage and, uh, it, try to elicit some feedback from the community in regards to the information that's in that toolkit. Um, and the responses are on the, uh, district's website. Thirty-eight pages worth of responses, actually. Um, and there'll be two more opportunities for those responses to be updated. So, uh, there's plenty of feedback, uh, so far that's been in, uh, that's come in. And there's still plenty of time for groups to check out a toolkit or do the online survey and provide additional feedback. Um, currently, um, again, based on thirty-eight pages where the feedback, there's, uh, kind of four, fourteen broad categories that the responses have been grouped into. Uh, those are shown, uh, on the slide that you're currently looking at. Um, and at this point, uh, we think that these, uh, fourteen categories provide broad buckets. Again, with, with a hundred and ninety-six people providing, uh, information, it's, it's quite a challenge to, uh, get it into, uh, groups that are really manageable, but the, uh, district staff has done a great job putting it in to these fourteen categories so that there's some rhyme or reason to it, um, as you go in to review it. As we move to stage two, um, the, uh, the focus will shift to, uh, presenting the information, uh, from the survey results and the community findings from stage one. Um, we'll also try to gather some additional input in regards to the educational and facility needs as a result of the public viewing the stage one, uh, uh, information and survey results. And then start to try to articulate, uh, the community-defined needs and priorities, uh, going forward, uh, for both facilities and, uh, just the edu, overall educational experience. And to aid that process, uh, we currently have, uh, six different community workshops tentatively scheduled. Uh, you can see those as they're outlined, starting, uh, Monday, April sixth. Uh, there are three, uh, during that week. In an attempt to try to make sure that we try to, uh, have as much availability as possible, there's one scheduled on a Saturday morning, uh, April eleventh, and then two more, uh, and then the following week for a total of six, uh, community workshops. Uh, again, trying to allow people have as much possible time to plug into this process as possible. Um, this is, uh, probably causing us to fall a little bit behind the original timeline. The original timeline, the hope was that the first stage would be finished up by right around March fifteenth, but in fact, it's , uh, probably going to slip past, uh, for about another week. This will start the second phase and that'll probably slip a little bit behind. But as we've talked about within the team and as the board has, uh, is aware, um, the timeline is flexible and we need to do it right and have enough time for each stage to allow the community to engage in this process. So, we think six meetings at the moment will provide good opportunity for the community to plug into this process.
So basically, this is, uh, the two weeks right after Easter?
Exactly.
And, um, and both, we've got evenings and I see we have morning ones. And we even have a weekend one with the Saturday morning.
Correct.
Saturday after Easter. So, um, at various locations, um, so that, you know, people have access to that. So that's, that's great.
I'd ask a question. How, uh, where are these dates going to be posted so the public knows where, where to go?
They'll be on the district website.
Is that the only place?
We're open to other suggestions. Uh, that's what's been talked about the most so far.
Well, you know, we've done this kind of thing in the past and we put stuff on the district website. My concern is that really the only people that know to go to the district website are people who have children in the district. Basically, you know, other, uh, other, um, demographics of this area don't even realize there is a website, a school district website. They never go there, they don't go there. So I'm, I'm, I would like to get this out. This is a great slide.
This information, the dates have also been already sent to the Hudson Star Observer so that they can be.
Will they be printing these?
I could see Meg right over there and she's saying yes.
Okay.
And then we might be able to get them on the cable station. I know that we have been able to just recently post things again.
Correct.
Okay, if they're, if they're going to be in the paper where the people will be able to see them, that, that will be very good. Thank you.
And, and not to inter, interrupt your report too much here, Tom, but I think just to emphasize a couple more points you made is that, um, you know, the team's very cognizant that it, we can't just have information on the school website. We've got to be able to get it out in, in other avenues and forums. And so, some of those small groups that you mentioned that have been presented with information, that includes like the Ecumenical Men's Group here in Hudson was given a presentation by, uh, me and Paul Borget. And then also at Bethel Lutheran Church, both the downtown and the Highlands Campus, um, was given, um, information about how to access, uh, the website. And we're, we're trying to reach out to people and demographics that may not have children in the district. So that's one of the key points. So, what, we would encourage and welcome very much if there's other churches that could follow the lead of, um, Bethel. That would be great.
Thank you.
There are several, uh, stakeholder groups that were identified early on by the, uh, Process Stewards and those we will continue to reach out to. So like the Hudson Moms Group is an identified group that we would communicate with, uh, directly to send the dates out and other civic groups as well.
So we got the last slide? I think you got one more slide here?
Yep, um, just to, uh, finish up, I think the, uh, there's plenty of involvement opportunities still. Just to finish up, I think the, there's plenty of involvement opportunities still available. Again, the toolkits are available to be checked out throughout the community. We're trying to wrap up the first stage by March 20th. Again, there's two public meetings this week and next, so if you want to participate, if the public wishes to participate in that public sort of group setting, there's, there's those opportunities and of course, the online survey is also still available. So, and as we start to think about having people attend those April workshops, we'll need head counts that would be most helpful, so we'll be looking for RSVPs as we approach those dates. And Tracy is the key contact for that.
Okay. Excellent.
Any other questions?
Board members, anyone else?
Mr. President, I have one question. You said that, on the other slide, it said there were 1,256 people who reviewed this on the school district website, correct? And only 196 responses. Do you have any explanation why there wouldn't be more responses? That's a pretty low percentage of people looking at it who are not actually taking the time to fill it out. Any, any thoughts on why?
You know, I would be speculating and there's almost 19 pages of information in that, in that online toolkit, if you will. And so, I think people go in and probably look at the point, the parts of that toolkit that are most relevant, at least for what they're interested in looking at, and then choose at that point to exit out instead of completing the survey and answering the five survey questions. That, that would be my speculation at this point.
Yeah. If, I mean, obviously, we want to get feedback, but we can't force people to view every page and answer every question. And so, the fact that there's been people who have visited, I like the volume of traffic, but I understand that, and I went on very early on in the process and I still gotta get the rest of my family members to get on there too because everyone's encouraged, regardless of what, in fact, one of the age groups that we need is that people are 20-something and I happen to have three kids in that, two that are still voters here in the district, but the other one is the 60-plus. And so, we need responses, but people have to be willing to, you know, answer the, you know, have the time commitment it takes to answer all the questions and view all the information. Because we really do want, it kind of goes hand in hand. They, they need to get the information and it's hard to answer the questions maybe without having the background of the information.
Do you have any estimate on if someone does do the whole thing, how long they can expect it to take them? Half hour, 45 minutes, 10 minutes?
You know, in the public meetings, the groups, actually, there's quite a bit of dialogue back and forth and like in all group settings, people can wander away from the data for a little bit before you can bring them back to get them to refocus again. Honestly, I think the survey could be done in 15 or 20 minutes if you went through all the pages and glanced through and picked out the information you wanted.
All right. Thank you.
If you're a slow reader, you might double that time, right?
There you go.
Yeah. 15 to 30 should cover most people, I would say.
Thank you.
Yes.
Jamie, just a thought, in, in stage two, it's more of a targeted approach to groups and getting information back and it's reviewing kind of the responses from stage one, I think. So, do you see any, any, any issues potentially with not getting enough data, not enough kind of information from the community for this, for the groups that are targeted to react to? The other part of this question would be, does, do we have the kind of flexibility in this process to be able to kind of open the question up again from stage one, in a sense, and continue to, to actually develop a result that we think will be useful? Does that make sense?
Well, again, I, I might be speculating on behalf of the entire team, but we're, you know, we have to get all the responses back by the 20th of March to know what we have now to take back into the second stage. The team is already starting to discuss what that might look like at this point in time. There's a lot of discussion about what should be included in addition to the survey results as we go into stage two and try to anticipate, you know, what, what the community is looking for, kind of that ramping up of that dialogue in the, in the next stage.
I guess we're just hoping that we've got enough data from stage one in order for us to have some meaningful sort of direction for stage two and...
Well, we're hopeful that this will be a building process as well. It's a learning process we go on. Stage one's very basic and to kind of get back to Sandy's point about you get only a fraction of the people who are going to the site actually answering all the questions and so forth. Part of it may be a little bit of intimidation factor, if you will, because the questions were very broadly worded, but they were so purposefully. And some people may not feel like qualified to answer what, what should be the education that our students get in the year 2040. They may not feel like they've got enough background in education what that might be. So, they may be holding back. And I know even among the process steward team, we have some members who want to get to stage three, which is, you know, looking at the options to address for our facility needs. But we don't want people to jump ahead. We want them to get involved now. That's why we held open stage one a little longer than what we anticipated. And we'll hold stage two and try to develop that as, you know, we're, it's a feedback process, it builds on it. We try to update the responses on a fairly regular basis. And those responses will remain there and people can always go back and look at what it was. And I think there was talk at the last meeting about keeping that open. As people learn more information, maybe they'll feel more confident in answering those questions about education, education needs in the future.
Are the results on, can the public go in and look on the website at what all the responses are so far?
Yes, it can.
Without names? I mean, they, they don't know who's responded, right?
That's correct. That's 38 pages worth of responses.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the team members? I just want to thank you again and give a particular round of applause to our community members who are volunteering their time, hours and hours every week. Thanks a lot, Tom.
Yeah. Thank you.
Next up on reports, we have multi-year technology one-to-one plan update. And Dave, this is yours. If it had a board member's name next to it, I know it would be Brian, but he's not here, so go ahead, Dave.
Exactly. Thank you, Mr. President. And we're gonna invite some guests up to help present this information tonight. And with the, the switching of the agenda, it got a little late, so thank you to the parents of the girls that are able to present with us. I know it's getting a little late and so you'll have an automatic extension to your bedtime. All right. So, we're here tonight to offer a progress update for our one-to-one Chromebook implementation, which was rolled out for all sixth graders this year. And so, no, we all, we now have a situation where all sixth grade students have a Chromebook, a school-issued Chromebook that they bring back and forth from home to school and use for continued learning experiences. There are, there are students at the high school actually also that have Chromebooks, but tonight, we're gonna focus on the sixth grade implementation as it's a, it's a little broader implementation and was the original design of the plan. You're gonna hear from representatives of a few groups, the stakeholders who make the success of this problem, or this, this process possible, sorry, but it's not a problem. And you're gonna hear from Nancy Toll, our district technology coordinator. And she works on the logistics and the nuts and bolts, but also offers tremendous help in the focus on the teaching and learning supported through technology. You're also gonna hear from Nancy Dressel, our technology integration coach that is assigned to the students and the teachers that are operating in a one-to-one environment. And you're gonna hear from Jessica Sliky, who is a sixth grade teacher who has found innovative ways to enhance the learning experience for all of her students. And most importantly, you're gonna hear from Abby and Maria, two sixth grade students who will share a little bit of their experiences and their learning opportunities with the new technology that was afforded to them through this implementation. But first, you're gonna hear a quick overview, if you could click, thank you, or someone, we need a clicker. Nancy, thank you. So, a quick overview of the implementation, followed by a summary of the progress so far. And I'll hand it over now to Nancy Toll.
Good evening. We wanted to start with just a real quick review of our one-to-one program. The district's media technology council actually started researching the best practices in one-to-one way back in 2008. But it wasn't until last year that everything fell in place and final implementation plans were made mainly due to the great decline in the price for devices, which we've seen over the last two years. We shared the plan with parents and students during sixth grade orientation last spring. And then, we conducted an RFP process that resulted in the purchase of 448er Chromebooks for sixth graders and another 125 Chromebooks for sophomore academy students at the high school. As you can see with professional development on that slide, we have had ample opportunity for teachers and students throughout the summer, last summer and the start of the school year to learn how to use their Chromebooks effectively for student learning. This support continues, as you'll later hear from others who are with us tonight. In order to remain compliant with the Children's Internet Protection Act and Children's Online Privacy Protection Act, the district purchased a service called GoGuardian, which provides internet content filtering of Chromebooks when in use outside of the district's network. The program also gives us valuable data on how the devices are being used. The graph from the program represents a typical weekday of student use at the middle school, where you can see the upswing when school begins, a break at lunch and at the final bell, and with slow, use slowly tapering off at night. This information is just from three months of use with GoGuardian, where you can see how active our students were in their use of online tools provided by the district, along with an account of content filtering protection. We can also see what's trending, as in the case of information on the right. This helps us know what's popular with students and allows us to make some, make sure content is appropriate. Because usually, when one student finds an interesting site, the word travels quickly to the others. We can get a detailed breakdown of the top sites students are accessing. It's been very consistent throughout the year so far with students primarily accessing learning resources through Google Apps and also their online curriculum materials from TCI and McGraw-Hill. We've also collected data in February from teachers and students. This graph is showing the percentage of sixth grade teachers that have, students use, showing how they use their devices with students in different ways, from online textbooks to presenting and sharing their own content. And in the fall, we asked for voluntary participation in the National Speak Up Survey. We had a number of middle school students participate and this graph represents the middle school students, what the middle school students told us regarding their technology use and how our students compared to the state and national averages. You can see how our, our students responded consistently higher than both of those. We can continue to see data that appears to indicate that our students are using the Chromebooks to help them learn and achieve at higher levels. And now, Dave's gonna discuss a little bit more about the goals of the one-to-one program.
So, HSD 2025, our strategic vision, served as the backbone for the technology integration plan that ultimately resulted in the one-to-one implementation that we're discussing tonight. The goals of the program are here in this graphic and they, they include creating, supporting transformative learning experiences and environments that reflect HSD 2025, supporting improved technology integration skills for teachers, and increase student engagement in the learning We've aligned these goals to our one-to-one implementation to our HSD 2025 graduate learner outcomes as illustrated in this table. You'll now hear a few specific examples of how we're progressing toward these goals. I'm gonna turn it over to Nancy Dressel, who plays an incredibly important role in this process as our technology integration coach is assigned to these levels. And then, we're also gonna hear from Jessica and Abby and Maria.
As Mr. Grambo just mentioned, one of our goals was transforming the learning experiences and environments. So, we asked ourselves, how have the learning environments and experience been transformed? And we looked at that through three G of our GLOs, thinking, technology literacy, and global literacy. So, our thinking GLO states that students will critically and creatively apply thinking skills and demonstrate the ability to reason through complex problems. As Nancy mentioned earlier, we surveyed both our sixth grade teachers and students, asking them to rate several statements from one to five, from strongly disagree to strongly agree. And one statement that they're asked to rate was whether or not they were able to explore topics in greater depth. And as you can see, our teachers and students both strongly agree that they are able to explore topics in greater depth when using Chromebooks. In fact, one student even commented on the survey that teachers give us, in all caps, "way more homework" now that we have Chromebooks and some of them even admit it themselves. I also have the opportunity to work with teachers in, in their classrooms and I'm very impressed with how they facilitate student use of multiple resources to analyze data, make claims, and cite their evidence.
All right. As the screen shows behind us here, we're looking at an example of student learning. Providing access to the web-based tools that are available on the Chromebook, like online communication feeds or the pinboard that you see here, allows student communication and collaboration to flow freely and instantaneously. It also provides teachers with transparency in regards to group work and conversation that we were not privy to prior to the one-to-one rollout.
More information is available at your fingertips. If you can't find the answer on the main website, you can look at other places. Example, in science, we could find information about focused organisms on our Fest website so we could search for the answer.
We can look at things closer. For example, today in social studies, we used a digital magnifying glass to zoom in on a painting of a battle scene used to make inferences about how the king seized power in China.
Our technology literacy GLO states that students will demonstrate the appropriate use of technology tools, evaluate quality of resources, and incorporate technology into daily work. Based on teacher and student ratings, we can see that both our teachers and our students, technology skills are increasing and our teachers are teaching what they've learned to their students. Our teachers have taken many risks this school year in their classrooms, learning together with their students, and allowing their students to teach each other and actually allowing their students to teach the teachers. This has been both empowering for both our staff and our students. Oops, sorry. Clicking and talking at the same time is a challenge sometimes. Also, on our fall Speak Up Survey, the students were asked how they could rate their, or how would you rate your technology skills compared to other students in your class? And as you can see, our Hudson School District students feel that they know more or even better than the students in Wisconsin and on a national average.
Examples of the technology literacy are evident in our classrooms. Because students have immediate access to such a large variety of resources, teaching them how to evaluate the information on the web has not only become integral to their success in the classroom, but it also helps to develop their skills as a global citizen. Students learn how to choose the right information to cite in their writing or to support the creation of a project.
I can find more quality information when I'm doing homework and my typing skills are way better.
When I was at home, I used Chromecast to hook up my Chromebook to my TV to practice a presentation. I spent more time on my presentation because I could work on it at home. I think I did a better job of because of that.
Our global literacy GLO states that students will understand how world cultures and global issues connect to their lives. Students will communicate in more than one language. Global literacy is one area that we know we can continue to grow in and that we actually need to collect more data on in the future. But we do have a few teachers who have tried video conferencing and virtual field trips in their classroom.
The screen that's up behind us here is just one example of the way we've been using our Chromebooks and the technology to connect with people around the world. This particular one that we're seeing up here was a project that I did this year in the House of Excalibur with my students where we were actually looking to serve the needs of students in Honduras. And it was meant to originally be more of a, I would say, kind of a charitable act where we were working on the importance of teaching the, teaching to our students what it means to give back, especially when we have so much. But then, we saw an opportunity to take our devices and technology into it. And so, that's what we're looking at here. Being able to connect with others around the globe is an invaluable experience. This year, Excalibur students wrote letters to a small school in Roatan, Honduras. The letters were compiled in a Google Slide presentation, which was shared with the students that we had collected supplies and clothing for during the month of January. After our goods were delivered to the students along with our correspondence, we had the privilege of being able to meet the students via a Skype session. Some of the HMS students, including Abby here, was invited to ask questions of the Honduras counterparts. So, there's an image up on the screen to show that session.
We asked where they would go first if they were to come to America and they said they would like to go to Burger King and buy a burrito. We, we also, we also asked them where they would take us if we went to Honduras. We, we als, we also asked them where they would take us if we went to Honduras, and they said that they would take us to the beach to play soccer.
It was interesting to see their classroom, hear their accent, and learn about their culture. They had one big table with a green chalkboard behind it, and they were all sitting around the table.
So the other question that we asked ourselves was, how has student engagement increased? And we looked at that question through the lens of our Entrepreneurial Learning and Life Skills GLOs. So our Entrepreneurial Learning GLO states that students will demonstrate their ability to work in teams and collaborate in the spirit of innovation. Students will demonstrate an understanding of what it means to adjust, be flexible, and change course of action. We asked students and teachers to rate a few related statements, and both teachers and students feel students are more engaged, more actively involved, and have more choices in how to demonstrate their learning since beginning use of the Chromebooks. Students also agreed that they are completing more group work. We believe that this will better prepare our students for 21st century collaborative work environments. On the Fall Speak Up Survey, students were also asked, how important do you think it is for every student to be able to use a mobile device, like a laptop or Chromebook during the school day to support your schoolwork? And as you can see, our Hudson students rated that as very important at actually a much higher level than state and national averages. And we believe that this shows that access to a device is improving engagement and learning.
You can share information with each other when you're far apart. You don't have, you don't have to be in the same room when you're communicating with each other.
For example, Abby added a comment when she worked on her project during PAT, but I was at a band lesson. When I was at home, I saw her comment and replied. We made a decision about what to put on our slide and made su, suggestions for how to make it better.
Collaboration and division of tasks has never been easier or more easy to monitor since the one-to-one rollout. Students are often asked to create a product or analyze a document or video clip or reflect on a lesson or activity. Doing this on their web-based device allows teachers the ability to monitor progress, provide ongoing feedback and guidance, opens more instruction time in the classroom, because students can still work, collaborate, and ask questions at home.
Our Life Skills GLO cites, states that students will demonstrate an understanding of a healthy lifestyle and making a positive difference in the lives of others. Students will be respectful of self and others and take responsibility for their own behavior. Uh, as you can see, teachers and students rated several statements about responsibly completing schoolwork and are in agreement that using the Chromebook helps them be more efficient and effective. One student actually commented on the survey, it helps unorganized students become more organized because they no longer need to carry around as many papers. Uh, having the opportunity to participate in digital environments is helping our students to develop better digital citizenship skills also.
I second what Nancy was saying. Uh, through the use of classroom management tools, like that of Google Classroom, which was just rolled out this last summer, teachers are able to provide a multitude of resources for student use. Unlike before the one-to-one rollout, now I'm able to post detailed instructions for assignments, attach videos and links, and copies of material quickly and easily. I have seen a dramatic increase in student organization and accountability as Google Classroom allows me to track work, submission dates and times, revision history, and missing assignments in a way that I wasn't able to previously.
So the last goal of our one-to-one, oh, I'm sorry, girls, I'll back up.
I feel more responsible taking care of a Chromebook than I did taking care of paper. Also, I am able to keep up with my homework even when I miss school because I can look it up, look it up in Google Classroom or in Classpages.
Now I don't have any excuses for missing work because I get notified if anything is turned in late.
So our last goal for our one-to-one implementation was improving technology integration skills for our teachers. And so we looked at this through the lens of our foundational content and environmental sustainability GLOs. Our foundational content GLA, GL, uh, GLO states that students will demonstrate skills, knowledge, and understanding of foundational content areas while recognizing and applying connections across all disciplines. Um, our sixth grade teachers and students agree that they have a higher level of access to up-to-date information and when they're using their Chromebooks. Teachers also feel that they're able to create instructional materials that better meet the standards, and they have actually increased expectations for student work and are able to cover more material in the same amount of instructional time. Students and teachers also agree that as a result of those things, they're better meeting learning objectives. One of the students commented on this survey, I love having the Chromebooks this year. It helps us learn by letting us use the internet when we do not know a word or when we have a question. Another student also commented that it's been a huge help for me, and I feel like I'm learning more.
Because students use their devices and web-based tools for the majority of their work now in the sixth grade, a new level of efficiency has been reached in the classroom. The time that was once spent allocating or allocated towards passing out and collecting papers, talking with students about where an assignment might be, providing a second or a third or sometimes even a fourth copy of something, or sending kids to their locker to find what they think they may have lost in that one place, has all now been replaced with valuable instructional time. Uh, this allows me to provide more content or go deeper into the content that I want to.
I think I understand math better because this year I can watch videos that help me solve problems that don't make sense.
I feel like I'm a better writer because I do more writing because I can type faster than when, than when I like write, and it's easier to edit to make my writing better instead of like scribbling all over a piece of paper. And most importantly, we have spell check.
Um, our last GLO that we're going to look at is Environmental Sustainability. The Environmental Sustainability GLO states, it's not good when you, can't get to your, here we go.
When the technology fails?
Yes. Oh, but look at that, it's back up. Our Environmental Sustainability GLO states that students will apply knowledge of environmental sustainability in their personal, professional, and civic life. Both students and teachers agree that using the Chromebook has reduced the amount of paper-based supplies needed. And in fact, we were actually able to track that, and we know that we have experienced a 5% savings in copies by sixth grade teachers as compared to last year. And we do have some classrooms that have gone paperless.
I am probably a small, or a little bit of a rarity, but I am 100% paperless in my classroom this year. And one of the first things that I notice is, well, I save time and energy, but printer frustration is at an all-time low. And not to mention tree conservation, which I'm very proud of. And one of the biggest things that I notice, or that I thought about is when I look at the little number that pops up on the copying machine, where it typically will tell you the funds that are allocated for printing purposes throughout the school year. I look at that number, and it's very, very high. It hasn't, it's hardly changed this year. So I think in my head about, could that money at some point be allocated somewhere else? You know, where we really, really could use it.
So when we were invited to collaborate in this presentation, we did some research on the bus, on our Chromebooks, about how much paper you can save in a classroom if you go paperless. We found that the average paperless classroom saves about 833 pieces of paper per student per year.
Our one-to-one program is still very new, and we are all very excited to see how it will grow and develop to support student learning. We want to continue to encourage student choice and use of diverse tool, set of tools, along with helping students learn how to select the best tool for what they need to do. Applying these tools to real-world tasks continues to develop, as do the general technology skills of our teachers and students. We plan to continue to monitor these developments with use of the Lodi Teacher Survey and Eighth Grade Technology Assessment, both which are given annually. And we look forward to coming back to the board in the future with even greater achievements linked to the one-to-one program.
All right, well, hearing from Abby and Maria, just such a treat to hear about their learning experiences and their leadership and the things that they've done on their own and, um, and just facilitated through that tool. And then also facilitated by a wonderful teacher that is finding those opportunities to make that happen. That is just amazing, and, um, I think we should give them a round of applause.
Any board members have questions or comments for our panel?
Mr. President? I would just like to thank them all for being here. This was an extremely interesting presentation. You know, when we voted, decided to go with the Chromebooks, we didn't know. We, we expected a good result. Now we can see it. So thank you for being here and giving us this presentation. It was very informative.
Mr. President?
Yes, Larry.
I just want to ask the panel, what was the biggest challenge that you faced? Maybe I want to hear from the students. What was the biggest challenge?
Like using the Chromebooks or?
Sure.
Well, the start, just figuring out how to get it all set up and like how to, um, search stuff. And we needed to like, I, to know like dot org and dot com and how those are different from each other.
I had trouble with the login. It actually didn't work for me at first. So I had to get that sent in, so, and then after that, I still wasn't good at it. So that was hard.
Great, thanks, girls. You guys did a very, very good job. So thanks for your presentation. It was very well organized. It was very well thought out, and thank you especially to the students.
That was an awesome job, you guys. Um, I, I'm curious about, uh, you mentioned about how you feel responsible taking care of your Chromebook. Do you see that in the other students? Is, are people glad that they have those and are trying to be protective of them? What do you, what do you see?
Some people.
It depends on the person.
I actually have my locker neighbor drop their Chromebook on my head.
I'm sure it was an accident, though. Okay. Well, my comment would be that just this Saturday morning, I was actually having a conversation with my dad, who's 75. And he was asking me, why are the schools using all these tax dollars for technology? Why do the kids have to have all that technology? And I wish he would have been here to watch this presentation because this is a prime example of, of why we need it. And, um, I agree with Sandy that this is even more successful than, than I had hoped, and I'm very glad for that.
And I'd like to respond to what, kind of what you were saying too. Uh, we're missing a key person up here tonight. She was homesick today. Jenna Ekholm is our IT person who's in charge of being at the middle school every morning to help the kids through the challenges of anything that breaks, anything that doesn't work. And she has just done a tremendous job with that.
Yeah, it allows for just a streamless, non-stop learning experience. So if a device breaks down, they go, they get it replaced, and boom, they're right back, right back to their learning. And, um, Nancy Toll and Jenna actually just presented at the Brainstorm Conference in, in Wisconsin Dells. And immediately after, I was getting responses from colleagues around the state recognizing their work. So, um, I can't say enough about both Nancys and their support for this program. It's been fantastic.
Mr. President?
Yes, Bruce.
So being a dad who has a sixth grader and, um, you know, is having a blast watching this, I'm going to ask him what animaljam.com is, of course. And I'm going to, I'm also going to make sure that he wasn't one of the 7,132 blocks, um, to make sure that that was good. Um, but if I could, uh, channel Mr. Bell here for a second and, and just implore you to continue to try and escalate this and move it along, because I think it's great. Um, the other thing that I just want to make mention of, which, you know, as a parent, I get to see some of this firsthand, which is, which is great. But, um, at Holton, my, uh, third grader now is already being encouraged to, uh, learn typing and, uh, go out and, and, uh, practices at home as well. So, you know, the, the fact that we're starting that young is spectacular. And, uh, I, I just think it's, I think it's wonderful that you guys are enjoying the experience and that we have a great staff here to, to make it happen and make it a great experience. So thank you all.
Just two things I'd like to share. We know our filter is working extremely well from our student survey because the number one concern that our students shared was that too many websites were being blocked. And they really wished that we would open it up further. Um, and also, we are very fortunate that our elementary teachers have really adopted and dove into the web-based tools that are available on a Chromebook. And our students who are moving up into the middle school will be very well-prepared to, um, start using a Chromebook day one and be very effective with it.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mary.
You know, um, this presentation that we just saw is representative of a lot of things that occur in the Hudson School District. We're investing quite a bit in technology, but it really isn't about the technology. It's about the learning, and it's learning about staff and students. And that was demonstrated here, not only just about how they put the presentation together because it was connected to our vision, HSD 2025. And I think that really speaks a lot for how we're thinking about that vision, how we're thinking about improving student learning and engagement of students instead of just implementing technology, which is not our goal at all. It's, it's a support for that engagement.
Thank you. Thank you once again. Next up in reports, we have Community Education Program Growth. And I see Tracy coming up towards the front, and Mary, this has your name next to it. And I know we've got some information for our board and the community regarding the growth in that program.
So the Hudson Community Education Program, over the last few years, has certainly grown in the number of offerings that we have and the number of participate, participants. And I really want to thank Tracy Havishaline for her leadership and Betsy Gans for hers as well, who has really helped expand this program and provide more opportunities for both students and adults outside the school day. Tracy?
Thank you. Um, Community Ed was restructured in July 2012, so that's, uh, the statistics that you'll see up here, the, or, um, numbers are based on dates from that point forward. Um, and as Mary said, I, along with Betsy Gans, support the Community Ed program. And when we started, uh, the restructuring of Community Ed, really looked at how do we, um, expand Community Ed so that it really is, uh, uh, supports or aligns with HSD 2025 and extending that learning outside the school day for all learners within the community. And so there's the established goals of the program. Um, just so you know how Community Ed works, uh, when there is an instructor who takes on a class and decides to do, teach a class, um, 30% of the fees from that class come into Community Ed to help fund, uh, what we provide in Community Ed as far as the registrations, the facilities, um, the support for those instructors, uh, the, um, marketing of that program. And then the, the remaining 70% goes to, so 30% into Community Ed, 70% to the instructor. Um, Community Ed is part of Fund 80, so those, uh, Fund 80 does not have any tax dollars that go into the program. What you see, um, on this slide is the participation data. We have two seasons that we operate the program, fall, winter, and then, uh, spring and summer. And, um, so starting in that 2012-13 school year, um, our brochure usually goes out about September. So that first year that, um, we started looking at how to expand the program, we had 97 course offerings at that time. We had 290, uh, adult participants, 296 youth and, um, children participants, and then with a total of 586. Uh, fast forward to this past fall, where we started with 192 courses offered and, um, nearly doubling what we have for participation. Um, our numbers in spring and summer tend to be a little bit larger. We, we tend to get more students who are participating, obviously, because they're looking for activities during the summer. Um, so far this year, you don't have the, uh, 2015 data up here, but our brochure, which I believe you all had a copy, um, at your site, the brochure went out around February 14th. Um, so we're, we're just about a month into having that brochure out, and we have, um, 525-plus registrations for classes so far. So we're on target to, um, meet what we did last year as far as participation rates. So what, what have we done to help grow the program and extend it? Um, so we have been reaching out to individuals and businesses and see, to see how we can partner with those folks to provide more in the way of classes. Um, some examples of that, we started about two years ago with PowerUp, um, which is a county-wide project to expand health and fitness with families. Initially, the model was, uh, didn't draw on a whole lot of folks. And so we worked further with PowerUp and Catalyst Sports Medicine to look at other ways that we can open up our facilities for, um, families to. to look at other ways that we can open up our facilities for families to have semi-structured activity to improve on their own physical activities. And this season then, we started an open gym program with Catalyst and PowerUp helping. And we've expanded that program significantly as far as the participation. We also have open swim time that we provide for families on Saturdays. We've also looked at Hudson High School Athletics in our clubs to look at ways where they can actually be the teachers, the instructors for classes, and then use the money that they would be making as an instructor to fund their particular athletic club or school club. So examples of that is gymnastics has offered several camps. So our gymnastics coach and team members provide the camp and then they're able to take that fund, the funds earned from the camp, and offset some of their costs, like their warm-up clothes. I know that they've used that. And we've also connected more with our area Community Ed providers to share resources as far as instructor pools, looking at making sure that our costs are consistent with our neighboring school districts. We've also looked at how we can support our instructors. So we've developed an instructor manual with expectations. We really don't want Community Ed to be in advertising format for folks, which we had heard some concerns about. We really want our instructors to use that time to teach and expand learning for all of our participants. So just really being clear about expectations and what we can do to help to support what they want to do. And then also providing class evaluations after every course. And then we regularly look through, Betsy and I look through that information to see what we may want to change as far as instructors, what we may need to add and look at improving as far as our courses.
Anything more to add? Any questions? Thank you for your help, Tracy, in growing that program because to me, I see it as a win-win when we can maximize our assets that we have for our taxpayers in multiple ways. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
All right. Then we have, next up, I guess that's me, Superintendent Selection Process Update. Well, it's very recent and the board did meet tonight, closed session, went through with our search team, the consultants that we hired. We have a slate of six, what I think is very good candidates. We will be meeting with them coming up in closed session on Saturday. It's basically an all-day affair. A goal is to narrow the field to three and then those three finalists will be publicized. And then they will go through an interview process that will be more individualized on the 23rd, 24th, and 25th, starting in the early afternoon and going through into the evening with the whole board interviewing each candidate at more length than that initial interview. And in that process, it includes the non-incumbent school board candidates having a role in conversing with these candidates. They've been invited to participate in that process. I think it's about 45 minutes somewhere in the 4:30, 4:45 time range. And the public will be allowed and invited to watch that and participate in that way, be able to meet the candidates, so to speak. And so we will then meet again. The entire board is going to meet on March 30th. And then at that point, we will be selecting our preferred candidates and hopefully... And then after that, I think there's background checks and references that need to be done before, you know, the selection is finalized and publicized. But the goal would be to have that done before our April 14th school board meeting. I think that covers the process. I haven't kept any... So now we move on to committee reports. And I, yeah, me again, I was substituting for Tom on February 24th. Seems like a long time ago, but it was two weeks ago tonight. And we looked at the 2015-2016 preliminary staffing recommendations. Without getting into a lot of details because it is preliminary, I can say that because of the budget proposal, and again, it's just a proposed budget, Andrea, working with the other administrators, and that includes principals at all the various schools we have, has kind of reined in the wish list, if you, you know, so to speak. We've got some positions that we feel are more critical, but it's only a handful that we would be looking to add. But if we had more funds available, we might be able to expand into other areas that have also been determined to be priorities but just not absolute needs. Is that accurate, Andrea?
Yes, yes, and we're continuing through the process with the principals in the next couple of weeks as well.
Right. And then equally interesting was the teacher salary structure update. This has been at least a two-year project, something that was passed by the legislature, I think is probably either part of or subsequent to Act 10. And, you know, this is now, you know, a process that has been worked on a long time. A lot of districts have been working on this, struggling. Some have implemented systems that have already been scrapped and go back to the drawing board. We hope that we don't have to do that. And as a result, we've been involving the teachers quite a bit in this process, have gotten very positive feedback. I'm very impressed with where we're at and the other personnel committee members can chime in. But I think that we're going to have a system that hopefully incentivizes but also is fair and allows us, our goal of retaining, keeping and retaining the good, attracting and retaining, that was the terms I wanted, attracting and retaining good teachers. Any questions on that? And then we went into closed session for various reasons. Just like we're going to be going into closed sessions after Lynn's finance report. So Lynn?
Thank you. I'm just going to cover the items that we did not cover in our board meeting this evening. Tim did partially cover though the preliminary budget for 2015-16 update. So we met last night at length and reviewed the preliminary budget numbers for the Hudson School District budget. And as you know, the district is expecting to see a substantial impact to the budget this year as a result of the 10% reduction in equalization aid estimated, as Tim told you, at around $2.6 million, as well as the elimination of categorical aid resulting in budget implications at around the $850,000 mark. So the committee discussed potential adjustments in the budget as well as we met with our consultant from Baird on debt service restructuring options with our consultants from Baird. And they will be coming forward to the board with that proposal in more detail later to reduce the impact to our budget. And everything else we covered in tonight's meeting and we also went into closed session.
Any questions for finance then? Who met just last night? All right. With that, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. President? I move to adjourn into closed session under Wisconsin statutes 19.85, Pern 1, Pern B, and C for preliminary consideration of non-renewal of certified staff. And under Wisconsin statutes, excuse me, 19.85, Pern 1, Pern G for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel who is rendering advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the board with respect to litigation in which it is involved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Lynn, second by Tom, calls for a roll call vote. Start with Carrie.
Would I cry?
Hanson, aye.
Johnson, aye.
Robson, aye.
Holland, aye.
Gerke, aye.